Community where all students are valued, challenged, and guided along in campus success. And our first writer will be Mr. Denver to approve the agenda for this evening's meeting. Do we have your attention?
So, a second. So tonight I'd like to introduce White Oak teacher Julie Mike Kemper and White Oak counselor Jen Stokes who are going to prioritize fellow White Oak Warrior and help us over the cheer dollars.
This is weird, but I'm pleased you're back. I'm Jen Stokes and I worked with Donna for the last one, well, not five or more years. I'd like to thank you guys all for coming here tonight and celebrating her and allowing us a moment to do this. Donna began working at White Oak in 2005 as an instructional aide. She remained with us at White Oak until 2011 when she and her then-husband Joe decided to move to India because why wouldn't you do that? What a Donna thing to do. They had the time of their lives in India for a couple of years and then returned home to their kids in their life year. Donna came back to White Oak in 2013 to resume her work the following school year after they returned. I got the privilege of working with her in my classroom many of these years and I loved every minute of it. Anybody that got to have Donna in their classroom was so blessed. She loved her students and her work deeply. When she passed and we had to call the parents of her students, one mom broke out in tears and said, "I know my son is a difficult kid, but I also knew that I could trust Ms. Newsy to take good care of him when I dropped him off to her each day." And that was Donna. She also had supplies at home after her passing that her family found to make up little gift bags for her students on her caseload for Christmas that year. The family put those together and sent them with us so that the kids could still have them. That is so a Donna thing to do, thoughtful and loving. She was also always full of sage advice. I often found myself seeking her out for worldly bits of wisdom. She always knew just what to say and it would often include some sort of beverage. If you knew her, you knew she was the life of any and every party. Sometimes in serving herself, made fun of jobs like foreign beverages at festivals. There's more to this story and it's a really good one, but better saved for later time. I love that Donna was always looking for ways to improve herself for her students. She would often come to my office once I left the classroom and became a counselor to chat about each kid and ask for ideas or asking to print schedules to get prepared for the next semester in the head. When I had the chance of cleaning out her desk, I found so many notes from students over the years and that was just another testament to her dedication and unconditional positive regard for each student she had. Sure, she would get frustrated, we all do, but she never gave up. Moms will never be the same without her. Donna looked like fully loved deeply and made the world a better place. The last text that she sent so many of us at White Oak was a video of her and one of her sisters dancing on the beach in the desert, I believe. Just to let us know how she was feeling that day. Just being happy and bringing joy to the world. That is so Donna and how I will choose to remember her.
Hi, my name is Julie Mike Kemper. I've been at White Oak for a long time since Donna was assigned to me as an assistant. In the educational world, there are good assistants. If you are lucky, a teacher finds an exceptional assistant. Donna was one of those exceptional assistants. She was at White Oak for around 15 years or so. During that time, I worked here or there with her and she helped some of the kids that were assigned to her who were on my caseload. This year, however, they brought us together in an even closer way. We were both given a different and very difficult-looking task. Donna became my right hand, my partner, my other half, working to help students succeed. Donna had a special mix of style and a whole lot of magic. She could see students as they were. She could meet them on their level while developing both trust and a positive relationship. She was gifted in this respect. Her passing left a mark on her students and it was really hard. There are still moments it's hard, but there are moments of joy where her students waste how much she meant to them in her own way. For example, on a recent science warm-up, the warm-up asked if you could be one animal, what would it be and why? Well, one of the students that she worked very closely with answered, "Something with wings to fly up to heaven one last time to tell Ms. Newsy how much I miss her." Well, I can't do it any more justice than that. She made an impact on all those lives she touched. She's missed and always will be missed. Donna, thank you for the impact you made on our staff and students alike.
This is on the board and we have a presentation from the PTA but she was unable to get. So I'll give that award to you guys. Thanks for cheering her, if you remember with us over the years, she was a huge part of our team and that's all.
On behalf of the district, personally, because as a White Oak Warrior, when I first came into this district and still a White Oak Warrior today, I worked with her and saw the magic that she created with the kids and the heart that she had and I truly want to express my condolences personally as well.
Is there anyone from the family that would like to speak? At this time, we'll take a brief recess, the brief of the family and then we'll be back.
As we approach the state and national competition season of our various CTSOs, I'd like to highlight one of our smaller membership and size-wise of CTSOs, but they are still doing many, many great things in our schools and community. And under the direction of Monica Lewis at Coring, I would like to introduce our SCC LA record editors.
Hello, good evening. My name is Ariana Stubblefield and I go to Butler Tech Bioscience Center. There I studied, I'm in the program, Project Lead the Way in Biomedical Science.
My name is Stephanie Cleely and I'm also a senior in 10 DRL Cosmetology Program. We are co-presidents of Butler Tech Coring Chapter of SCC LA.
SCC LA stands for Family Career and Community Leaders of America.
We are your local SCC LA chapter. There are over 4,000 chapters across the country. In our chapter, we have 14 members. Our advisors are Monica Lewis and Kelly Hellson, the two family and consumer science teachers at Coring High School.
Since 1945, SCC LA members have been making a difference throughout their family, communities, and careers by addressing important personal work, societal issues. Involved in SCC LA offers members the opportunity to expand their leadership potential and develop skills for planning, goal-setting, problem-solving, and others necessary in a home and workplace. So some pictures on the board, the first one is us making dog treats for Tales of Hope, which is a local dog shelter. Then that's us at Mofford Heights, everybody should know what Mofford Heights is. We were there for their
Holiday event.
Their holiday event where they just had different stations set up for different holidays. I mean, different things people celebrate during December, not just Christmas. So for us, we did Hawaii Christmas, so we had hula dancing, passed out lays, all that fun stuff. And then the last picture is us at Bethany House, which we will talk about later.
Our chapter decided to do a FACS project. FACS stands for Families Acting for Community Traffic Safety. We chose to do the FACS project this year because early in the school year, we lost a senior in a car accident. We decided to bring a national-recognized guest speaker to Coring to address the juniors and seniors and encourage them to make good decisions while driving. We partnered with Student Senate and BPA to cover the cost of a guest speaker. We know the speaker made a real impact because the students made comments that the speaker and how her presentation connected their feelings and how they could be safer themselves. We also partnered with the Precision Machining Class to make key chains that we will give to students and parents that signed the seatbelt punch card.
This year, we also did a service project as a chapter. For this project, we partnered with Bethany House. Bethany House is a local family shelter for homeless people. Once in December and once in January, we planned and prepared meals for the families there. We served about 120 people each time that we went. We also planned and carried out a Valentine's Day craft night for the children there. Additionally, we ran fundraisers so that at Bethany House, they could get health kits. One of the directors at Bethany House asked us if we could donate some individually packed snack items if the kids were hungry later after dinner.
After working at Bethany House, I felt inspired to help the community. When at Bethany House, I could see the impact that we have made and I could see the joy on people's faces and the impact that we have made by making meals for them.
Bethany House really showed me that a little goes a long way. Just us being here for like once a month for a couple of hours really had a huge impact.
Ariana and I have been active members of SCC LA all four years of high school. One of my favorite memories of being part of SCC LA is going to San Diego, California last year for a national competition. During the competition process, I learned skills that will help me in the future and took away memories that will last a lifetime. Going to Nationals in San Diego empowered me to get out of my comfort zone and meet new people. An example of getting out of my comfort zone and meeting new people is SCC LA tradition to trade pins with other members throughout the country so you get to interact with them. We also had fun, as you can see in the first picture. And we also went to a famous bakery and met the owner.
Yes, he was very nice and he also gave us some donuts, which they were like giant enormous. But going to Nationals empowered me to try new things like his donuts, for instance. They were like so big and just crazy out there. And I also had zucchini tacos, which was pretty cool. My favorite part about being in SCC LA is the friendships that I've made. Also through my public speaking skills through the years and competitive events. Additionally, we've done so much regarding our community that it benefits our graduation. We usually have enough service hours to graduate and earn a community service seal, so that's pretty cool.
That's some of the competitions that we did last year throughout the two regionals, the states, and nationals. Thank you very much. About SCC LA and our experiences in the club.
You're a woman, no one would graduate you.
I want to, since I go into the Cosmetology Program at DRL, I want to own my own salon and go to College for Business.
And for me, I want to become a pharmacist.
Well, thank you for everything. Every time new students come up here, I'm just an all-on-cop professional and not mature. You guys saw that. When I think when I was in high school, I was not that mature to travel and to try new things and to be volunteering in the community at your age, so it's wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, it was a pleasure.
It was a very pleasure to work with you.
So I want to talk tonight about our redistricting process, where we are and where we go next. So I'm going to start with going back to the beginning. And when we embarked on our redistricting process, it was to address a primary objective. We were extremely over-enrolled in that building. We had been using the stage as a classroom. Other elementaries also experienced that. We also, as all show, have some overcrowding in our other schools, but redistricting is able to address the elementary at this time. So we also know that we have a long-term master facility plan and our goal and the secondary objective is to align our boundaries to ensure clean feeder programs moving forward. We engaged with Cropper GIS, who has facilitated this process and worked with enrollment trends with schools all over the state and the country. And so they really used a process to develop materials that facilitated the study, facilitate a process, and then get empowered, community members involved in the process, and leverage their expertise since they've looked at all these options multiple times across the state. When we looked at our criteria that we used, balancing school facility utilization was a huge component of what we were embarking on. We also wanted to make sure that we were looking at data to ensure that we could account for future growth to avoid additional redistricting that would need to be done unless things shifted and changed. We also wanted to make sure that we were having kids attend schools closest to where they live, maximizing efficiencies in transportation. And then again, that clean feeder program, making sure that students stay together as they go from elementary to middle school to high school. And then one of the things we knew was when we did redistrict and there was going to be movement of students between buildings, that ability for students who are entering their last year in that building to be able to allow them to finish out that elementary experience in that building where they've been for that time period. We also wanted to make sure that we minimize the impact on students. There are a lot of options we could have looked at. We wanted to make sure that we chose options that meet these criterias but really limited the impact on students. Wanted to make sure that we were looking at the diversity of our district and making sure that we were honoring that inclusive environment. Making sure that we had contiguous zones where we were not skipping over and making it less efficient. And then from a safety perspective, when we were looking at boundaries, using natural boundaries or major roads so that we don't have students crossing major lines of traffic and buses who are putting themselves or kids at risk. We want to make sure we use those natural boundaries to help establish those boundaries. We started in October with a lot of data selection and an internal planning team that met to kind of process that information. We had two public information sessions and we had a public feedback section where the public was able to get feedback on two of the options that were out there. Both options were presented publicly. We had an event on December 13th at Coring High School. Cropper was there with maps to be able to walk people through the process as well as the different options that we were looking at. There's really two ways to chop up the district, either vertically or horizontally, and those are the two options that were shown. We did have a survey that was open through January 3rd. We only had about 56 people complete that survey, but we did analyze that feedback as part of the team. And we continued to review both options and we had our Transportation Department intricately involved in the process to make sure that decisions that we were making were maximizing efficiencies with transportation. Currently, this is the utilization we have. And you can see in the red, Pleasant Run Elementary and Struble are both over 100% capacity, which is creating the instances where we have classrooms that are not necessarily in a space that was designed for a classroom. Currently, we also have all three of our middle schools that are over 100% capacity. Redistricting would not alleviate that congestion. In fact, we do have, at White Oak, our nurse is stationed out of the old locker room. So we are using every available space in our schools to try to address the overcrowding. But at the middle school and even at elementary, our facilities can be addressed through our master facility plan in order to address that. Coring is a little bit over capacity, but we have a little bit of flexibility there that we'll be able to utilize space. And again, they are being creative with their space as well. So this is a district issue that we're trying to address and we're doing it multiple ways, through the redistricting as well through our master facility plan. This is the current map. This shows our elementary attendant zone. So you can see at the very top of the map, that first shaded area is the Pleasant Run Elementary Attendant Zone. Directly below that, in that purplish color, is Taylor. The large green area is Coring Elementary. Under that, you have the light blue area, which is Struble, and then the pink area at the very bottom, which is Mofford Heights. This is our current districting plan as it is now. Option one that we presented to the community, basically adjusted by moving some of the PRE kids south to Taylor, some of the Taylor kids to Coring L and Struble, and some of the Struble students to Mofford Heights, to balance out the elementary and to try to do that in a way that is least disruptive. And it wasn't changing secondary paths. Students were still going to the same high school even if they were going to a different elementary school. And that was important as we went through this process. Based on feedback we got and additional feedback from our Transportation Department, the final draft, the final map that we're using, has a couple of adjustments from this. So the adjustments are that there's a little bit of, you can see that top arrow. It was a little bit green, now it's a little bit more purple. So there's a little bit more of the Coring L, it was initially Coring L, it's staying Coring L. On that second arrow, on the very far right, right next to the arrow, that neighborhood was split between Struble and Coring Elementary. From a transportation perspective, picking up one entire neighborhood is more efficient and could minimize the number of buses that are needed to go in that neighborhood. So that entire neighborhood is being shifted to Struble. And then you'll see on that bottom arrow, and I'll go back, you can see it. That is Blue Rock Road. And some of the kids were on the north side and some were on the south side of Blue Rock. The final map has Blue Rock being a divider line to create that natural barrier that eases transportation with their route. So that is the final draft or the final map that we're going to be using as we move forward that will address some of our elementary overcrowding. When we implement that next year, we'll go from over 100% to all of our buildings being in the 90s except for Mofford Heights, which is still a little bit in the 80s. There are other units in Mofford Heights that are taking up space, so that kind of evens out. So this is where it will be next year. When we think about students, we have 141 students who are currently at Pleasant Run Elementary that will be moving to Taylor Elementary for next year. Taylor has 132 moving to Coring Elementary and they have 52 moving to Struble. And Struble has 140 moving from Struble to Mofford Heights. That's where you saw the colors change as the maps progressed. So that is the change that will happen next year that will alleviate the overcrowding at the elementaries. We have a website, it is NWLSDRedistricting.com. Later this evening, it will be live with that new map. So families can go onto that website. There is a link on there, if you scroll down about halfway, it says web map. If you click on web map, it will bring up a screen that looks like that image on the right. At the top, that first black arrow shows a search bar. If families type in their exact address, it will come up with a picture of their house and that little box at the bottom right that shows them the elementary, middle school, and high school they'll go to. And this one says green because the address is not impacted by the boundary adjustments. If there is an adjustment, it'll have a red statement on there that says that it is being impacted by the redistricting. So families will be able to go there and find if there are any changes to their specific address. In addition to that, letters are being mailed, old-fashioned postage mail, to families as well as emails going to families who are impacted by a building change. So we're going to communicate both ways to ensure that families are getting the information. If a family has a student who is currently 4th grade but going into 5th grade and is subject to redistricting to a new school, there will be a form for them to fill out that will indicate if they want to keep their child in that school for their 5th grade year so they can finish out their elementary experience at the school they're currently at now. Younger siblings would not have that option. We always have the intra-district transfer policy that we follow. So people currently who would prefer their students to be in a different school for a variety of reasons can fill out that intra-district transfer process. It goes to our enrollment center and then they process all those accordingly based on the enrollments they have and whether there's room for the family in that school. So that's where we are with the redistricting piece and the communication about how that's going to move forward. Before I move into part two, which is how redistricting affects transportation, are there any questions about this part?
One of my questions was about the grandchildren. So the other question is, you showed the elementaries, but the middle school and high schools would stay where they are and the kids would stay the path that they were on, is that what you were saying?
Yeah.
And then will there be another opportunity for the community to ask questions at a forum? Or will it be, who do they contact, I guess, specifically if they have questions around that?
Right now, it would go to the enrollment office. They're managing the intra-district transfers and the letters that are going out with the changes.
So not on the website, there's no feedback or something on the website?
No, they can always reach out to myself, Chris McKee, for map planning and we can get them this specific information. All of the buildings also have the information so they can actually reach out to their principal and their principal can share that with them as well. We share that with all the buildings. So as I said, one of the things that was a huge conversation through this whole process was transportation. So I want to talk about the other factor, transportation. Obviously, we have been trying different strategies to mitigate the canceling of routes. So we've always worked on a short-term and intermediate and a long-term strategy for how to minimize the number of routes that are being canceled. The short-term was about hiring staff. So we've been trying to fully staff positions and to generate a cadre of subs. HR has been hosting events. They've gone to Butler Tech to try to hire. They've gone to other hiring events out in the community. They've hosted hiring fairs internally. We post all of our positions on Indeed. They go to Ohio Means Jobs. So they're actively pursuing and trying. And our transportation staff has been actively recruiting and asking people if they want to drive. We've been actively trying to pursue that, but it's not gaining the fruits that we would like to have. We're still canceling routes, we're still not fully staffed. That short-term strategy is not bearing the fruit that we would like it to have. And immediately, we've been trying to maximize route efficiencies. From last year into August, just through routing, we actually last year started pushing out a form to our families and asking them, "If you're using transportation, please acknowledge that you are utilizing the service so we can route for people who are using it, not everyone who is eligible." And through that process, we were able to reduce three routes. Cancel three routes, combine them, and have three less routes starting the year this year than we had when we ended the year last year. Throughout the year, our Transportation Department does count weeks where drivers are literally taking attendance on a daily basis and counting who's using their bus so that the office staff and the supervisors can analyze that to see if there are some routes that are not being used, not full, and others that have room and they can combine those. In January, three additional routes were completely canceled, dissolved, done away with, and students on those routes were moved onto other buses, trying to mitigate the canceling of routes by reducing the number of routes we actually run. Again, we are still canceling routes. Long-term, we've been looking at actual how we structure our routing system and what changes we could make that would maximize the system even more than what we have. So in the short term, the fact that we are still canceling routes, since October 18th, we've had over 3,000 days of missed school where students were not able to get to school because they didn't have transportation. And these are the absences where parents have called in and communicated that this is why my students... is why my student has not been able to attend. It doesn't mean that this number actually is not higher than that. That's just what we can actually report based on parent communication. This causes a lot of disruption. When we're canceling routes, our drivers are on different routes than what they signed up for and what they practiced. They're picking up different kids when we split routes. They have kids on their bus that they don't normally have, that are going to houses they don't normally drive to. They don't know the kids. They don't know the route. And so they're being put in situations where they are doing the best they can to keep kids safe on routes that they're not familiar with, with kids that they're not familiar with, and that they don't have an active relationship with. Our staff, when you have this many days of missed school, are struggling with keeping kids caught up, trying to make sure that all of the kids are moving through the curriculum and advancing, because normal absences are hard enough, but when you have additional absences compounded by this at that magnitude, it creates a burden on our schools to be able to make sure our students are still growing and learning at the rate that everyone else. So this impacts the entire system, and it's something that we can't continue to sustain that way. So I want to talk a little bit about what our current structure is and what our options are moving forward. Currently, we have a three-tier structure. What that means is that all of our drivers drive a morning route, three morning routes, and three afternoon routes. So that's the three tiers. Think of tier one, two, and three. I drive to, um, White Oak, St. Eyes, and Monford Heights. Those are my three tiers. Currently, based on our three-tier system, our drivers, when they choose their route, it's calculated on an annual amount, based on the number of days you drive, number of hours you drive. It calculates the entire annual year. Our daily route times currently in the three-tier system range from a little bit over four hours to about seven hours. So we have drivers who are driving on a daily basis of a little over four and some at seven, and it creates a large range of what drivers might experience. This system requires about sixty-six drivers, and currently, based on our policy, we transport everyone out of a one-mile radius. We also are required to provide transportation to our non-public schools. We currently have six non-public and/or charter schools in our district that we actively provide transportation to on a daily basis. Those six charter or non-public schools that we route to are about thirty-five routes per day that we are running to the schools. They effectively are a tier in of themselves, in addition to our district schools. When we route, non-public and charter schools provide us, they're starting, based on law. If we need to, we can drop students off to that non-public or charter school up to thirty minutes before that start time, or up to thirty minutes after that end time, to make that fit more efficient for us. Our routes run about forty-five minutes per tier, so being able to adjust thirty minutes doesn't move a non-public or charter school from tier two to tier three. It just gives us flexibility within the tier that they're in, based on the start time they give us. All of our schools then kind of fit in around that to make sure that we have enough buses in each tier, and we're maximizing that. So we work with the charter and non-public schools, um, but we have to work around the times they give us. So we have a few options about how we try to mitigate the canceling of routes, and these are our long-term structural changes. One of the things that we have that we can do is we can adjust our policy and we can change the transportation limit to more than one mile. This would require that anyone outside of that one-mile radius that's impacted by that change would then have to provide their own way to school. By doing this, this is the impact it would have. Currently, at one mile, we have a little over seventeen hundred students who do not qualify for transportation, and their families provide their way to get to school. If we changed to one and a half miles, we would then impact over forty-two hundred students who would no longer have access to district transportation. And if we went to the state minimum, which is two miles, we would impact over fifty-seven hundred students district-wide and in the non-public and charter realm who would no longer have access to transportation. Those are dramatic, and they actually have some unintended consequences. So when you think about that, we would have a lot of students that would lose access to transportation. We would then have more kids who were beginning to school a different way, walking or families driving. That would increase car traffic at our already congested locations for pickup and drop-off, and that would create a lot of, um, a lot of congestion and headache. It would reduce the number of drivers, but in a three-tiered system, based on what we've shared, that's still going to be a range of hours from about a little over four to seven, depending on which routes are combined together and what you're driving that day. So that's one possible option we have, but that's a very significant and severe option. The other option is to look at a four-tier structure, where we actually move from three tiers to four. This would move every driver to having four A M routes and four P M routes, and it would move every driver to being close to that six to seven-hour range. So most of our routes would then be closer to six hours. It would require less drivers, but in order to do that, it does require some adjustments to school start times, because now we're moving a little bit wider, so we're going longer from the morning to that tier. So we have talked about this with some of our non-publics, because obviously, with just that thirty-minute flex on the front and the end of the day, sometimes that's not enough. And so moving to a four-tier model would require not only changes in some of our school start times, but changes in some of our non-public start times. We have talked to them, and they have been amenable to making some changes to their start times in order to mitigate the cancellation of routes. So we appreciate their flexibility and willingness to work with us on a possible solution. When we look at this, moving to a four-tier model, currently, all three of our middle schools start and at the same time. We would have to split them off. Because of the number of buses that go to each middle school, they can't be on the same tier. So Corrin Middle School and White Oak, their student day would go from seven fifteen to two-ten. Pleasant Run Middle School would shift to tier two, which would be seven fifty-five to two-fifty. The high schools don't change. They stay exactly the same. We don't provide transportation to the high schools, so there's very little change that impacts them. Most of our non-public and charter schools fall in tier two and three, and so that pushes our, the rest of our elementaries to tier three and four. So Struble and P R E would move to tier three, which would have their student day from eight forty-five to three-thirty, and Corrin, Monford Heights, and Taylor would move their student day to nine twenty-five to four-ten. And as I said, some of our non-public schools are going to have to adjust their times, and they've been amenable and willing to do that if the strategy is going to mitigate some of the canceled routes. And long-term, what we see is that, sorry, by doing this, having that longer workday for our transportation department could be a way to recruit and retain some staff and to build a subpool of people who would be able to kind of stay with us with a number of hours that would be sustainable as they wait on full contract routes to open up. So we've been working with the redistricting process and with our transportation department, and I want to thank Yolanda and Brian for being here, and Tanya, who is not here but has been behind the scenes, working diligently to try to process redistricting as well as a long-term strategy. We know that what we're doing currently with just our short-term and intermediate strategies are not yielding the gains that we need, and we have to do something different if we expect a different result. And so this is the ability for us to mitigate some of the factors that are impacting our ability to cancel routes. Doesn't mean that we'll never cancel a route again. I'm not going to guarantee that, but it is a strategy that would create more hours for our transportation department, more time to recruit and retain drivers based on this. Next steps. We are going to continue to inform the community about these two long-term options. We're going to open a comment period, where through March tenth, we'll put out an online forum where we want to hear people's comments. We want their feedback. We're not going to ask them to vote on which one they want, but what are the pros and cons you see that you want us to consider when we think about a long-term strategy? We're going to host two information sessions, one at Corrin High School on Monday, March sixth, from five to six, and one on Wednesday, March eighth, at Northwest High School, from five to six, where staff, community members can come. We will go more in-depth with some of the details behind the numbers, so that people can understand the rationale for why these are the options that are being considered. Um, I'm believing we've considered a lot, um, and these are the ones that are by. And then the operations team will review all the comments that we get from the feedback, and then we'll, on March twenty-fourth, we'll come back to the board with the final decision about how we're going to try to mitigate this long-term, because as I said, having that many kids impacted by lost instruction, the frustration of our staff trying to keep them caught up, and the frustration of our transportation department and our drivers with being on different routes where they don't know the route or the students, is not something that we can continue to do without a significant intervention. Any questions?
Well, thank you for that. That's a lot of information.
It is a lot.
Information, it seems like, um, yeah, a lot of work has gone on behind scenes. But thank you to the drivers too, because I, I were one bus driver, and just the amount of things that they have to keep attention to, um, and then now doubling up, um, the traffic, people not paying attention, kids misbehaving behind them, um, just, it's just a thankless job, and I don't think anyone really understands what they do on a daily basis, so.
And when they're on a bus with kids that they don't know, it's hard to maintain that control when they don't have the relationship, and we know our parents are frustrated, and sometimes that frustration comes to the driver, because that's who's there at the bus stop. And so our drivers have been through a lot, and they deserve a solution, that we can do something different to try to make it different. I can't guarantee it's going to work a hundred percent of the time, but we can't continue to just do what we've always done and expect it to be better.
Have we talked to the drivers about what some of our, you know, why can't we keep some, have some attention? What are some issues they're running into? Is it behavior, is it just, you know, what are things that are really high on their list of things, and what are their thoughts about?
Oh, actually, I have Susan, because Susan's been doing exit interviews with people who have been leaving.
So, um, while we have, um, when anyone from our district departs, they can, you know, participate in an electronic exit or an in-person exit, and during that time, our drivers who have left us have cited, um, two main reasons, and one is around pay, and the other one is around student and or parent behavior. And then the third area that isn't necessarily cited by drivers, but we know is a reason is also, um, around, um, discipline offenses where people.
How many drivers have we lost in this, in exit interviews in the last, like, year?
Um, since July first, seventeen have left us, and we hired sixteen.
And how many, how many drivers do we have right now?
Chris, do you know?
Currently, sixty-two.
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five. Sixty-five. And we need sixty-six drivers to run our routes right now that we have set up.
Well, but we also don't have a subpool right now, so when drivers call off, when they're out on leave, that's creating a lot of the issues, and that's one of the things. When we cancel routes on a weekly basis, it's based on the absences we know, and then when we have additional call-offs in the evening or the morning, that's when parents are getting the additional text that comes out that says, your route's being canceled today. So some of those last-minute ones are things that we haven't been able to plan for, but our department works, starting at four-thirty, four?
Four-thirty.
Four-thirty, getting those calls, and then rerouting and trying to collapse routes and move kids into other buses to minimize the number of kids who are going to get that call.
And, and I know this is not just our district. There's, there's problems other, I mean, just today, Lakota, everybody, you know, what a big district, they canceled ten routes today. You know, so it's just not, it's just not here in Northwest. It's everywhere. I mean, I was down in Florida last year, and I saw sign after sign, bus drivers needed, bus drivers needed, you know, in these little towns down in Florida that we were going through, and just, and it's just, I don't know what the answer is.
And it's not just a driver, a transportation issue. We have open positions district-wide that we're trying to mitigate, but this is the one that we're trying to really look at, a long-term strategy that could involve some systemic and strategic changes.
There is, um, with, uh, going down to fifty-four drivers and a lot of people having to pick up an extra route, can you talk to the drivers about the increased workload? How do they lose ten drivers because they don't want to work?
We meet with them on Thursday, and a lot of what we've been hearing is that some districts have gone to a guaranteed time as a retention strategy. Um, this would give us, without going through a process, basically a guaranteed time for our drivers, where they would be getting more hours than they currently are, based on this four-tier model.
Does, you know, some of the retirees, there's earnings limits and so, where do you get such security early?
And a lot of our more senior drivers are already in that, um, six hour or more, but this would make it more of a recruitment tool and retention tool.
So we currently have sixty-five. What is the average daily census, would you say, for drivers there?
The average attendance rate?
That are, that are present and driving.
The absentee rate, um, based on long-term and last-minute call-offs is around ten or more drivers a day. So is that about ten?
Ten's a lot.
Which puts it on everybody else to pick up the slack.
And that's why we're hoping with a more significant amount of time, that we can offer our subs, that we'll actually be able to not only fill our routes, but actually build a cadre of subs who can backfill that, so that our current drivers are not having to split routes, take kids they don't know, and go to routes that they're not familiar with.
How are we addressing the students that need to be on buses, and that's aside, they're first to talk, like, with Susan?
So they've tried to work through just addressing, um, different strategies with transportation department, but I think the biggest factor is the fact that they don't have a relationship with the kids, and being able to have consistency on that bus with the same driver on the same route every day is where you're going to get that. It's the same thing we have in our classrooms, when we have subs in a classroom and a teacher covers a classroom for another teacher, and they don't know the kids. They act differently than when the adult they have a relationship with, with the expectation that they're familiar with is there. And so our drivers do a great job with the routes that they have, with the kids that they know, and we need to do something to keep them on their routes with their kids more consistently.
Taking a page out of Chris's book. When I was in school, if you didn't, it was a privilege to ride with us, and if you misbehaved, you were given another chance, and then that's it. You find your own ride to school. I, I mean, it, it's causing outages for other kids who deserve to be on the bus, because we're letting those kids continually misbehave and run the show.
That would be my comment. I, I mean, we, we can't put that on the bus driver. The expectation for the kids has to be a little bit higher. You just can't wind a kid up and put him on a bus and hope that they get to school without acting a fool. So I mean, I, I agree with you, right? It's a privilege, and we're providing that privilege for them. They, they have an opportunity to lose it.
And our bus drivers do write kids out who misbehave. It goes to the office at the school where the student attends, and it is addressed, and it goes through an electronic system where they can track, and they should be getting an email back with what happened, and kids are removed from buses for egregious So more to come on this, but we will have the information sessions and the feedback forum that is out for people to give comment on the two options, and then we'll come back at the end of March with where we think we can go to make, um, hopefully, some significant changes in transportation strategy.
Thank you. Appreciate all the details. Thanks, Yolanda. Your student achievement rates on the report?
Thank you. So I've got a few pages here with, uh, student achievements around our district from our main schools, and my apologies, I'm going to do the best of my names that I can. So from WAMs, there were January students of the month in sixth grade, Vera Ouch, Liz Prattfish, Robert Wagner, Addison Mangle, Christina Cucker. In seventh grade, Donovan Roman, Haley Prillett, Ella White, Harry Dickens, James Bolton, Lea Meyer. In eighth grade, Portia Zawoski, Bryce Smith, Ethan Milton, Emma Walters. From Corrin Middle, four Corrin Middle School students were selected for honors for district. This event is sponsored by the Ohio Music Ed- This event is sponsored by the Ohio Music Educators Association. Once a year for 7th and 8th grade students, students selected to participate in this elite group receive a copy of challenging music, and must learn it in order to rehearse and perform among high-performing students from around the Cincinnati area. These students arrived at Princeton City Schools on a Friday night, rehearsing for roughly four hours. Students were expected to arrive early the next Saturday morning for six hours of rehearsal. After all of their hard work, students performed for their parents with only two days of full orchestra rehearsal. Concert went very well, and Northwest Public Schools should be extremely proud of these students, and will get extra miles to showcase their talents. Students are Allison Hostler, Jessica Lane, Silas Frecklescraft, Andrew Williams. From Struble Elementary, Struble Elementary is excited to share that we have a multicultural club. Following grade 4 and grade 5 students were nominated by their classmates to serve as their club representatives. Uzol Rhea, Armani Lavender, Carly Thucker, Abe Reyes, Sidney Taylor, Arcuba Sudibi, Ronald Leah Catholic, Chase Tokio, London Coach, Jake Fion, Cameron Thatcher, Riley Mays, Kia Waffle, Nimscha Tamang, Aiden Burke, Adriana Nance, Zoe Parrish, London Gardner here, and Morgan Bertram. The club meets weekly to discuss ways to celebrate diversity and share cultural awareness with our Struble family. 39 Struble Blue Jays were recognized at the monthly character breakfast on February 10. Students are recognized for following the Blue Jay way and exhibiting good character. Students and a member of visitor family celebrated with a special breakfast and recognition ceremony. Each student receives an award and a t-shirt. From Taylor Elementary, this past week, Taylor Elementary had five positive behavior report students. These students received above-Qs Brieos, certificate worth $10, and Q above-Qs Brieos. Ryder Carpenter, Christopher Lawson, Sebastian Howell, Barry Wilson, and Dante George. From Corwin High School, congratulations to Lauren Platter for winning first team all-conference for swimming 100-yard backstroke. Awesome job representing Corwin High School well. Also, this past weekend, Lauren took home ninth place in the state in 100 backstroke. Way to go, Lauren. Congrats to Cory Thornacraft for winning GMC Co-Player of the Year for Academic Quiz Team. Great job this season. A huge shout-out to Corwin High School Winter Wins, who took home first place at Fairfield and Kettering Fairmont Competition this month. Best of love, and congratulations to the following student athletes for creating a play at collegiate level. Maya Lambert, Thomas More University Bowling, Brennan Green, Thomas More University Baseball, Will Shute, Bowling Green State University Soccer, Jariah Steele, Shawnee State University Basketball, Donovan Dillingham, Wagner College Football. Please congratulate the Butler Tech Programming and Game Design students below for making it into the top 20 in the nation in the BPA Virtual Event. In BPA Virtual Events, students all across the nation contribute projects for events. The students below have advanced in the top 20. For the Software Development Team, the students are Kalon Corneo, Justine Solomon, and Tomas West. These students had to create a 2D game that interacts with an online database. Users can create an online account, log in, play the game, see their stats, and see a leaderboard of the top players of all the users around the world that have played the game. For Branding Team, Camille Benford, Cheryl Crowley, Ellie Wagner, and Brennan Whistler. These students had to make six promotional-related items for the Anaheim Comic-Con, including a flyer, a video, and a mock-up website and mobile app. Now that these students are in the top 20, they will present virtually for an opportunity to advance to be in the top 20, begin to represent Corwin High School and Butler Tech in Anaheim the last week. Good luck. Northwest High School, congratulations to Sierra Hilton for receiving the Butler Tech Business Student of the Year Award. Eight of our students have done an excellent job advancing to the Deca State Competition in Columbus. Amelia Akamon, Alan Bailey, Evan Balanos Gonzalez, Cody Harmon, Deacon Johnston, Nancy Lopez, William Harlan, and Tyler Smith. Congratulations to our advanced students, Cindy Tucker, Stephen Bydlman, Bywell Raisel, Anthony Minchin, and Kayden Stevenson for a superior rating of 1 in the OMEA District 14 Solo and On-Saw Movement. Congratulations to our girls and boys bowling team for representing Northwest High School at the district meet. The boys bowling team, Terrence Johnson Jr., Edward Walker Jr., Mason Rose, Robert Brown, Kyle Jackson, and Elias Anderson. For the girls bowling team, Rebecca Vanity, Chris Huddeman, Amaya Ortiz, Lori Ketteler, Jocelyn Sumato, and Emma Woodall. Thank you.
Yeah, just a couple of things. I just wanted to let you know that two weeks ago, believe it's up at the Butler Tech, the Biosign Center, where the Governor John Houston came in there, leaving complaining for years about capacity and needing the state to help step in to help us. And he was there, and Randy Gardner, who is the Chancellor of Higher Education for the state of Ohio, was there, Monica Posy from Cincinnati State, and Jurgen Jay from Miami University. And our issues are, we've had, we've turned away 1,000 kids last week, that we don't have spots for career tech, you know, across our district and the rest of Butler County. And, you know, he just appreciates us trying to work with Miami University, Cincinnati State, trying to work this out, and then that takes us into the governor, put $300 million in his budget for career tech across the state of Ohio. So, which, they're trying to get this capacity problem, because there's so many companies out there that need kids, and jobs, and there's so many openings. And then they also, he also put in another $200 million for adult ed and higher education into his budget, but as we know, they have to go to the Senate and the House. But hopefully, that will work out, and we'll be able to get some additional funds for, like, some of the capacity issues that we have, to build on to a school or something, so we don't have to turn away 1,000 kids, you know, that want to take our classes, and...
Did you get a little bit of a message?
Yes.
They got any budget for that?
They don't. But this is the first time that they're putting any money towards career tech. And John Grant, Superintendent Butler, he's actually on the committee that's going to decide where that money goes, and, because there's 49 tech schools in the state plus that counts, any of your, like, Cincinnati Public, Columbus City, clearly they do their own career tech, so they would be in line for some of the money also. So that was an interesting meeting with those guys, so hopefully that, you know, this is the start of giving some money towards, you know, Butler Tech and all the career tech schools in the state to alleviate this problem of capacity. Other than that, that was it, and then just one other stat that they, they gave there was that 52% of the kids that go to college in the state of Ohio graduate, and then it was said 87% of adult ed graduate across the state, and out of those 87% of people that graduate from adult ed, 96% of them are getting jobs in the area where they're, you know, they're paying for. So it's very interesting that the career tech end of it is really building right now for jobs.
Again, we're coming out with CDL, we're asking.
Well, we do, we do CDL. And they do, they do the CDL testing of Butler Tech also, so.
Students have their recruiting.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty interesting, so it's, I thought those stats were kind of interesting about the adult ed compared to graduating from college and their 40-year career, so. But other than that, that was it, and I'll have an update as soon as we find out where they're going to divvy up this move now.
Chris, was there any other statement?
Um, we do. Nicole, with the new session comes lots of people submitting bills. Before I get into those, I'll try to keep it brief. I did see an interesting stat in the state of Ohio in the last 20 years. The state has spent 28% of work in the last 20 years on education type stuff, but yet 84% more on pension payments. So you can see where priorities are. House Bill Number 6, sponsored by Representative Powell, and a lot of these were started last year, but they didn't finish, and they were reintroduced. It's called the Save Women's Sports Act, requires schools, state institutions, higher education, private colleges designate separate single-sex teams to support group sex. So that would prevent the folks who were born as men competing in track and field with, with women. House Bill 8, I'll leave the names of the reps out, would enact a parent's bill of rights to require public schools to adopt a policy of parental notification on student health and well-being, and instruction materials would be, they would be notified after any instructional materials with sexually, sexually explicit content. House Bill 9 would establish the Grow Your Own Teacher Program, would establish a loan repayment program for all teachers, make changes to teacher licensing and professional development. House Bill 12, we've talked about this, would rename the Department of Education, it's the Department of Education and Work Force, or is basically dilute their power and put the power in the hands of the legislature. For fear that it's a very progressive school board now, and maybe the current majority in Columbus wouldn't like what they come up with. This is one that I can only imagine. House Bill 38, which would allow school districts to permit students to take up to three mental health days away from school each year. Take all three of those. House Bill 46, this would require notation of an educator's district or school employment license, and disciplinary action, consent agreements. So we've had in the past where teachers who had problems, maybe went to another district, and nobody knows about their past. So if a teacher were to do something that wasn't good in one district, future districts would know about it and make hiring decisions based on that. And finally, last but not least, and I did mention this once before, but again, it just, just shows you the lack of respect for how people, the OPM, other people's money. SDRS in fiscal year 2022 lost $10 billion in their portfolio, that's up 11%. Everybody lost money in the stock market, did very poorly, but yet, they were able to give $10 million in bonuses to portfolio managers in December. So a lot of racket to be a portfolio manager. You lose that kind of dough, and you get, some people got $4 million in other loans. So it's, it's, it's open now in some other people's money, and that's it? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Yeah, appreciate all the updates. Interesting. Any reports from employee organizations?
No, I don't remember.
Alright. Community, sorry, community communications. We did have three suggested boards. I just want to remind everyone that the Board of Education welcomes opportunities to listen to residents' comments, suggestions, and concerns. The, the meeting is conducted in public, but not a public forum. So while community members can speak, we cannot converse throughout your comments. Everyone has filled out a comment card, and each person will be given three minutes to speak on the item requested, and no more than 15 minutes will be given to the group. First up, we have Bob Cuffey.
I guess this is on, if I understood, that I should be speaking to this colleague?
You can speak, unless we just can't converse.
Okay, okay. Well, good evening, my name's Bob Cuffey, I live on 8692 Beck's Ridge Drive. Just so I can maybe explain this issue a little bit better, hopefully I can explain it and frame it correctly. All the other matters that were brought up tonight about the transportation challenges, I was already pretty much aware of that, not all the detail that I heard, but I, I think everybody has a pretty good picture of that. This has to do with my particular street on Beck's Ridge, and the one adjoining street is Michael Moon. We're kind of lucky, we've got really nice wide streets, we have two full-size cul-de-sacs at the end of both streets, plus one on the elbow of Michael's room. I myself was a commercial driver, retired a year ago, August, is when I became aware of the issue I want to bring up with you here. But just as a matter of if we can agree on this, those particular streets have nice full-size cul-de-sacs, and I myself have turned around a summer, because I had to deliver on my own street. This particular issue has to do with the fact I've been retired since a year ago, August. I wasn't even aware of it, because when I was working, I was gone before dawn, and I was home after dark pretty much every day. Since the year of August, I became aware of the schedule more than I ever wanted to know, of how the elementary junior high, high school gets picked up on my particular street. And, and just also, by the way, I should mention, any professional driver knows the most dangerous thing they'll ever do in your old days, backup. So you avoid that if you can do it at all possible. Another safe way you avoid that, you know. I'm only talking about when they pick up your driver, our driver picks up the junior high school kids at 6:30 in the morning, and does a three-point turn, activating the backup alarm, which the revolver, others in the app, you associate with schools as long as you have. By design, they're very loud in attention-getting, and it ends right at the front of my house, right on my bedroom, and I get a wake-up at 6:30 every morning. Now, if we had dead-end streets of a meter, our driver wouldn't have a choice. I'm not talking about the rest of any of the other drivers in their day, just the one at 6:30, and there's an option. I don't have many, except to move, I have no good options really, I'll tell you that. I didn't work all that time to retire and get up at 6:30 in the morning before dawn. So I'm hoping that somebody might be able to use some of that communication, empathy, and integrity in that, in that student profile y'all are trying to create, and maybe can have a conversation, long-term, have a conversation with the driver, and hopefully, some kind of compromise just the one time, go back up at 6:30 in the morning.
Thanks, Tom.
If you can do anything, is it possible to be contacted? And I, I don't want you to be a bus driver either, but I've spent, I made six different attempts at, at appointment with the superintendent, I was never successful, and I never did false that.
If you will leave your contact information to someone back, we can get a call back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next up, we have Rich McVay.
Meeting Board, recently I submitted an open records request to get the latest copy of the superintendent's evaluation and his improvement plan, and I had that, and I appreciate that. I've, I've done a lot of these things over my 40-year career, and I just wanted you to use some of your comments and look at what you provided. And I would encourage any other residents, and teachers for that matter, back to avail themselves to this information. The reason, because it is the primary way that the board gives direction to the district. And what you, what, because, period, that's it. What you give to the superintendent is what you expect to have carried out. My review of this thing left me with four big questions, or, I guess, judgments. One is, there was evidence provided of, of skills that were evident in the period, but there was lack of any mention of improvement areas. That's not balanced. There was a lack of reference to progress versus measurable goals. Now, we were going to get A, but we got A minus 10%, A plus 10%, no measures. The focus was mostly on process issues and not results. And fourthly, an urgency and priority for change is not clear. And what you brought up. I had some questions coming out, like where are academic results headed? The district is in the bottom 10% of all schools in the state of Ohio, and that did jump out in your feedback. You guys are concerned about morale problem, but you don't define what it is. What is the morale problem? You're concerned about staffing shortages, because you don't define what they are. We had this big conversation just previous by the superintendent talking about bus driver shortages. That didn't make your list? That didn't make your list. Now, you did mention some things that were important. You all wanted to have better communication with the superintendent, and that's not uncommon. You were concerned about the fact that teachers are spending too much time getting students into a disciplined state of mind to learn. That morale is very low, needs to be a priority. Those things didn't jump out in the assessment that you provided, this superintendent. Now, he did provide a list of completed activities for 2022. Long completed list, it was pretty comprehensive. If you go back and look at that list, and you evaluate it versus the effectiveness of the issues you see today, I think it raises some questions. Now, I do think that given the evaluation you've given, the next step is for you to sit down with the superintendent and say, what is the improvement plan? What are we going to do? We've provided this feedback, now what is our priority for change? We spent a lot of time here talking about the need to get our buses on schedule. That'd be the number one priority. Get the bus problem fixed, get the teacher problem fixed. Everything else is on the back burner. Thank you.
Next up, we have Megan Carroll and Stephanie Caldwell.
Hi, I'm Iskem. I am the president of elementary ETA president, and we have a meeting on Thursday, and I was coming to get some information about the transportation because we have so many group parents. Honestly, I became not knowing what to expect, or how much you guys are going to touch on it. You pretty much answered all of our questions. I am actually really happy to get back and explain to everybody, show them the slides, and give some people peace of mind that there is a plan or that there is an ultimate goal in all of this. I do believe that one thing you really should think about is the behavior of other buses. Zero tolerance. It does not matter if there is a stop. Right now, there's a stop every single day on our route. More of us, and my personal, my children's route 56, yes, we're a bus driver. So every day, somebody new. If we give the excuse to the students that they're just acting up because there is a stop, they're reactive every day. We were told by a couple of the drivers that we had spoke to that were currently stopping for our route, that the reason that we want the route is because the route before our set of bus runs, the students are too bad. With the bus driver shortage, obviously, we are not paying out salaries for those who are missing the echo and filled. Is there a way we could get some assistance, like don't need CEOs, that maybe could sit on these buses with the troubled children? And maybe help in that area to give the bus drivers some support? I do believe that teachers and drivers across the district definitely need more support, more supportive, and anything that we can do for them to keep them on the bus would be wonderful. We don't want to continue to lose them over children's behavior. I mean, that's a problem.
I was going to touch on the behavior, but she just said that. I think Mr. Yater did a really good job. He pretty much said everything that's impacting our kids' education. Personally, my son is a pleasant-run middle school, and he gets passed up several times a week. He's late for school several times a week. And I am able to get him there, but he's always late since holding this in that first class. It's stressful on everyone, me, myself as a parent, on my child, on teachers, bus drivers, everybody. I just think we need to make this a priority for a solution, which I know you're working on. Thank you. Whatever we can do, I'm willing to help. I don't know what I can do, but, you know, I'm here to, whatever I can do. And I just want to make a comment on that too, because she's been great, you know, me calling her and complaining. And I feel for her because she's one of the best she can with what she has to work with. So we're going to get back to that school and give all this information back to them. So, thank you.
Thank you.
We have several items for your consideration and approval tonight. Teen resignations, one retirement date revision, five initial appointments, one change in status, various supplemental items, and two separation agreements.
We have a few donations. Side-by-side donation of books to the Houston Early Learning Center, Yale Healthy and Dale Beck, donation of software to St. Clair Elementary, Coloring Women's Club, donation of books to both Monford Heights Elementary and Houston Early Learning Center. Then we have some vendor contracts, mainly Title I services, non-public contracts, CCP agreement with Sinclair, Life Touch for pictures and yearbooks, and interpreter services, nursing services, and special ed services.
And the student services, we do have an update to our athletic director's handbook that is acknowledging indoor track as a sport so that some of our students who are trying to compete in the off-season are able to do that. And then there is the resolution for membership at OHSA that we approve every year. And I know this seems like a lot, but last meeting was a work session, so this is two meetings worth of information. So with that, the superintendent recognizes the Board of Education, approves the consent items as listed. So, let's start.
Any discussion? So we're on track. That's not a huge, that's a typical. Every month, that's how it's out.
The resignations, are they like a pride center to forward those? Or is it, we're going to finish our contract out for the year? Or what is the immediate impact and how quick that happens?
So most of them are two weeks.
Is that really the updated position for the coach?
So it's literally just acknowledging that so that our students can compete. And they allow them to enter into the competition without a recognized, but it's not an immediate cost for us.
Because when my kids were in indoor track, they couldn't wear the Coring uniform because they, it wasn't a sanctioned sport. But now they'll.
Now they won't let them enroll in the competition without it being a sanctioned sport by the state.
For the school consent items, we have our regular meeting minutes from January 23rd and our special meeting minutes from February 9th. For our funding report for the month of January, we have our all-fund balance of $61 million. Our general fund and reserve balance of $30 million. Our revenues this year gave are $51 million or 52% per year, and our expenditures are $53 million or 55% per year. So revenues with majority of our income from local property taxes. We are funding in July, August, and then January, February, by the January, we're just starting to get that second after-year revenue. That's why we roll that 3% for January and end of July. Our investment grade average return is 2.95%. And our list of monthly bills, we have most of them are all routine monthly bills, but we also have our contacts at Constitution and things, of worrying debt fund numbers. And then we have our budget update. So we don't have to do any of those if we have any budget. We have the inputs at the 2018 level, which means the costs they're using to determine the cost of education are 2018 costs in 2003, but we work for this year's 24 and this year's 25. But they have increased the local capacity inputs, which means they're using current valuation and income tax returns for what locally our community can afford to pay. So they're reducing the cost of education and increasing the local capacity, which makes our community less wealthier to the public and to support the community. As part of the writing a budget proposal from the governor, he's proposing an increase of about $500,000 per year, which is about 1.5% of the interest. And that's also, really, the state formula, the state's supposed to be 25% of the funding for basic education. Right now, they're paying 33% of the 25%. And this would bring it up to 15% instead of 7% of the 25% they're supposed to pay. So it still is not 100% of the 25% that they're supposed to pay for the funding.
There you go, it's fine.
And then another bill today are proposing, House Bill One. This is the elimination of the rollback, the 10% rollback that the state has been paying since 1976. This is to fund the saving and tax deduction that they want to do. So they're taking away the 10% rollback, which would put an immediate increase onto every property and rich taxes by considering that the state, tax credits that the state is paying on behalf of property owners. And they're working on a way to fund that 10% for the property owner by reducing the valuation percentage from 35% to 25%, which makes the property owner whole, but reduces the valuation that can be used to fund the property taxes that have been led, and voting through them by local communities. In other words, that does go against House Bill Number Twenty, which was a 1976, which was the inflationary, House Bill, which keeps the past from, or flattens the past. This would actually reduce, so now all the things that we, that have been approved and voted on, our community consent will reduce, and we receive less one. So I'm not sure whether this is a point, but this is very close, and we'll have to go to see whether that one is through the process. We also have a then and now. One then and now for internet services. And we have four grants to accept and prove and appropriate. One is Coring Middle School for a hygiene, training closet, or number one West High School for Oral Tymonal Health Care. Nilland County Health Department has given us funds for a common home, several common owners at Bell's preschool, and then also parenting classes to offer throughout the district. And we gave recently $100,000 to the grant for a monthly payment. And currently, according to exactly what's required, it's $43,000 passed through ID families and that I asked for to accept the 10% and I have access.
I have a question for you, Amy. With the levy coming up, bond issue, I get people asking, I never can give them an exact number. But if somebody's, you know, someone say very well-to-do, worldly kind of guy came and said, I'm going to give you a check for one year's operation for everything for the Northwest School District. In other words, what would the total be, you know, in terms of our budget? $135 million? When I started, I think we worked somewhere around $20 million. But what is the total? Because people have been asking me how much our total budget is, and I'm always off. So could you give me a number of what we spend, let's say in 2022, just for you?
We have a lot of positions that might not fill in 2022, but so if we were a resident now, are you just on the general fund operating or district one?
Just to run this school district. You know, money that we did from the state, from property taxes, from grants. How much money would it take for this rich guy to write us a check to run this district for a year? I'd say $135, so I don't know if I. I could write for $135. Thank you, Amy.
And all funds, grants.
Does that include? Does that include Nasser funds? So next year, the number will be?
You guys want to write the check, we'll go on 46.
Two items for information tonight. One is our semi-annual harassment information and bullying report. This is the report of all of the documented cases where parents have filled out the form this entire paybook. For the first half of the year, we did have 21 reported cases and four that were verified. And that's again, only the ones that were formally reported through the formal process. All the informal ones where parents called the office, students go in and talk to their counselor, those are not mediated in this report, just the formal ones.
Is that a separate report that would never come out, or is it just?
Yeah, the only, a lot of it is done through the counselors and mediation. And so unless it disciplined where there was some kind of mistreatment, not everything would be a report. The ones that come sort of do go into our system. The other thing that is on there is the school year calendar for the 2425 school year. Again, I want to reiterate 2425. This is us keeping two years ahead of our calendar creation so that our staff and our families can be aware of start dates, spring breaks, and they can plan vacations and events around the calendar. So this is for information this month, and it'll come back at the next meeting for approval so we can start publishing that and give our families plenty of time to play.
Do the principals, do they give them an enter it before we see it, or how is that? Okay, so they, they need to.
Yeah, so it goes through them. We actually look at the start dates, what works, the PDA's, how many we need based on what they need at building. So it all just sort of follow the process of their building situation.
A few items just to update. One, Matt, you touched on it a little bit. Coring Chamber Commerce had an award ceremony, and I just wanted to congratulate a couple of people. Coring Township actually won a publication award, so I want to congratulate Coring Township, the trustees and the administration for all the work they've been doing around the community investments. Butler Tech won a community impact award, so congratulations to them for that. And we actually had two students who were recognized for their business awards. So we had Sina Bear and Siana Goldit, who were presented with business awards. We actually wanted to announce for everyone that our next board meeting is actually going to be at Butler Tech location. So on March 13th, we will be at Butler Tech at their National Science Center. It's a new facility, so we'll be up there, and we'll be in a tour of that as well as having our meeting at the Butler Tech facility there. And then I'm going to give Susan an opportunity to highlight a drink provision hiring event that's coming up.
So we are excited to share with you that we will be having a hiring event on Friday here at the central support offices from 11 to 1. This is bus drivers only. We have two people already signed up and who are coming to be interviewed, so fingers crossed, they have their CDLs. But we will be hiring folks who are interested in that. So please pass the word along if you know, if you're interested.
Go out and just media, so share a way. Could you elaborate just briefly the process for a new driver that you announced applies? And I have to give.
Sure, so I'm glad you wanted to see her, so she corrected me. And so when.
You want to process?
Yes, I actually do that.
You want to just tell us?
So I can do the beginning part of the interview with us, then we pass their names along to transportation. For folks who do not yet have their CDLs, they actually participate in that process with transportation and you'll want to get into it.
They're under training, they're four days a day.
Sure, it's a six weeks training.
For someone that does not have a CDL, the training is about six weeks. And that is on, online, well onboard training with the O B I. And then they have to take drug screen, they have to take a physical. So the process could be almost eight weeks from start to end, and it is paid training that we offer.
Everybody, I feel like this is not the most important thing. What has caused this shift, this demand?
So I should have an event with Lieutenant Everett, he said, was talking about workforce development. And one of the things that they were talking about was the shift in the actual population shift that we're experiencing with the baby boomers retiring out. And the population that's left is lower than what is going out. So there's a situation where we have fewer people carrying the workforce that are leaving, which is creating this vacuum where we don't have enough people for the jobs, which is why they're pushing a lot of workforce development around automation and trying to train people in jobs that are kind of future ready. But we're struggling with that emergent of having a workforce that's shrinking, but the job base is not shrinking.
Well, that's what the workforce, with the governor, with that money into career tech, they, they see that all these companies, they need people, and they need these kids to graduate in these particular careers because there are jobs ready for them right now.
And that's a hundred percent true, and we support that. We also just can't forget that three K ten is what they need when we get into other type of program or career type program. So funding that public school model to get them ready for those opportunities is also bringing the work.
And the Department of Labor shows there are ten million open jobs to people to.
And also, other thing, astounding number, the number of people in the twenty to thirty-eight bracket that choose not to work. You know, maybe it started with the COVID and the government checks. I worked in facilities as Marquez where people live off of everything that's covered by the government. And when somebody gets a voucher and their part of it rent is forty dollars and the government's paying seven hundred and sixty, there's not a big incentive for a lot of folks to work. And so maybe that is something that needs to be examined. But once the government gives an entitlement away, it's never coming back. So, you know, I don't know where we go with this, and I think it's everywhere. I just wanted to, Daryl, I went through the Gold Star Chili, and the owner was fixing the hot dogs and waiting in the window, and I asked him why. He said, "He hires people and they don't show up. They give interviews, they don't come, they'll quit in the middle of the shift." And he said, "I didn't like it, employees, but he isn't." It's everywhere.
Would you remember comments?
Yeah, I'd like to bring up, Nicole, we talked about this topic. I think two things that would really greatly improve our discipline problems, and we all had one. The first is these things. I have family members, other school teachers in other districts, and the kids use these, playing video games, they use them to cheat. Amy, do you have a picture? Oh, it's up there. Amy's, it's up ahead. Starting next year, I think it's too late to implement it this year, but I believe Ross does it this way. When the kids come in, this would be on the back of, or in the wall, the kids come in, they would drop, you know, each kid would have an assigned number. The student would drop in his cell phone or her cell phone, getting in class and on the way out, pick it up, and nobody could argue they don't have it for safety reasons for pickup. That, to me, is going to be a big step, getting rid of these things during classroom time. So I'll bring that up for action for the board at the next meeting, vote for implementing this policy. These things run at thirteen dollars a piece, these little pocket things. I am concerned, I was looking for one that was non-discretable, because I could just see somebody who doesn't like this go up there and tear their pocket off the wall. But we'll worry about that later. I'm estimating probably we'll get to about a hundred of them. And I'm talking to middle schools and the high schools. I believe we will probably in the primary schools. So that's something that I think we should really entertain. We've got to do something. It seems like we're constantly rearranging the next, the next chairs on the Titanic. You change things around and nothing ever changes. This is a real change, I think for the better. If there's a problem with it, we can launch a send at the first of the year next year. But I'd like to invite any, anybody with, just quick comments now, and then we can discuss it more in detail.
I know some districts where it's optional that the kids put it in there, Ross included. If they don't, it has to stay in their bag. If they're competent, it's gone for the day. You know, I, I think we have some middle schools that follow a pretty strict policy. My son never has his phone, but I know we have some that don't follow a policy on them. So, you know, any, anything we do is only going to be as good as the teacher whose classroom is, is abiding by it. Because there are some places where teachers are now having his use of phones to look things up or do different things. So I think it's important that we get our administrators and teachers in, but before we put on something about it, but I'm hoping to be good.
Yeah, I don't know how we would do that. But again, this is rearranging the back chairs on the Titanic. I wouldn't make it optional because kids are going to be, "Oh, no, no, I need this, keep looking stuff up." You know, I always think of hardcore.
I appreciate that, yeah.
And there's, there's, obviously, if they're making these things, there's a lot of school districts that are using them. I just punched in on Amazon Classroom, cell phone pockets, and about forty of these things came along. So they're being used.
They're used to be used for calculators in the old days, and we actually, kids have calculators.
But I use them for shoes.
But I will tell you that the board did ask that I work with the principals on aligning and tightening out some of the discrepancies between buildings. Chris shared this picture with me, and I do plan on sharing this with principals when we go through that process this spring to update all of the policies for the fall. So that's on my radar, but it wouldn't actually have effect until the fall based on the process we would normally do with our principals and teachers.
Well, let's maybe pull off an action then for.
Is your proposal to mandate this for every classroom?
At the middle school and high school level, mandated, no option, they have to put them in there?
Because I could see it more as, you know, I was an advocate for the B Y D, the bringing in device policy that was enacted years back when cell phones weren't permitted at times. But it's my understanding classrooms are, individual classrooms are empowered to not allow the B Y D.
It depends on the building.
Right.
Some buildings have teachers make that decision, some buildings have made that decision building wise. That's one of the things that we would point out in the spring process because we do our student contract provision, to make sure that some of these things that are descriptive between buildings are unified and we can handle them.
Yeah, I see that as a picture. This is a tool that's available for individual teachers that would like to utilize this, you know, because they're, you know, they don't see a need for a cell phone use at all, and their kids in the classroom or neighborhood is disruptive. And, you know, make this as a thing available again. But then, you know, classrooms, they benefit, the students benefit from having the B Y D policy.
Well, the problem with that is they're like, "Well, my math teacher doesn't make me do this, so why should I have to do it in here?" And that's why we either have a consistent policy, in my opinion, if it's a consistent policy where the kids just know when I walk in, I get a number, well, it's my spot, put my cell phone in there, and then I hit the bell. I mean, this is in the pocket science. This is, I mean, I've heard some really, I've never heard anything good other than maybe, you know, in some chemistry class or history class, somebody looks up, you know, Napoleon and see when he was born and when he died or something. But, you know, perhaps they could use their eye patch, certainly eye patch for that. I'm talking about the nasty little thing that we all carry, and I'll even turn around and go home and get mine, but I blew out, forgot it. But there's no place in the world, in my opinion, for it. So maybe, what should we take action on?
We typically do a base to the students that are enrolled in March and April, and they come back in May and June with the recommendation as kind of information on one session, and then the final, and the updated logos in the second session. So it's a two-meeting process. But we typically start that in March and April, getting our principals and our building leadership teams to go through and start providing feedback. It will be a little bit of a process this year because of trying to align some of the discrepancies, to make sure that we can come to consensus on some of these bigger issues. So it will come in probably May or June, and you get that kind of final recommendation for the fall.
Okay, hopefully, if you have time to visit first, you know.
Yeah, we change the fall.
Okay, we'll just wait until that, but I will bring it up.
And I have the picture, so I will share that with them when we get there.
Okay, then thank you for having that ready. I was just waiting to, like, Amy's picture.
It would be a benefit to see if anybody would like to log here and try it, and then utilize their feedback on whether the impact, whatever impact it had in the room.
We'll share it with the principals at our next principal meeting, see if there's anyone who wants to kind of pick it up and see if they want to file. Which we probably have a bunch of these in closets from our overhead days.
And I think that's a great thing in theory, Mark, but I'm just afraid, you know, when it's an optional thing, you know, teachers.
I'm not saying optional, I'd say we would, like, we just try it. And that doesn't bring, whoever wants to try it. And then they bring back, say, "Hey, this is the, this is the impact it had in our lives, when good, bad, or different."
We have a lot of teachers doing different strategies. Somebody makes cell phones now, so we'll also engage with them while they are already doing what we should, so that we can kind of leverage what's already out there.
Thank you.
Just want to add, Chris, you did bring up a point there. When I advocated the B Y D policy, that was prior to everybody, you, I would say, one-on-one device.
I just wanted to thank, just wanted to thank the FCC L.A. presentation. Those kids work very hard at what they do, you know, just like any of the other schools that have sports and art and music and that, but they, they work just as hard as everybody else, and they're doing a very good job. Daryl, thanks for the transportation update. I think that answered a lot of questions, and hopefully, we can get to that four-tier thing so we don't have to cancel these routes.
There's been a lot of work behind the scenes, and Chris, Yolanda, Brian, and Tanya, I can't, I feel after all the work they put in to be creative, trying to come up with something that's different that would work.
And then I was going to mention the two students that won the awards at the Chamber Commerce, but, yeah, they were, they were great to talk to, and they were your introduction.
Yeah, also, you're welcome to thank Aaron and Stephanie for coming and speaking on the FCC L.A. as an organization, just so impressive for their public speaking and the, I suppose. And thank you, Daryl, and Transportation Department for, you know, what you've done to, you know, present progress for this year. Because clearly what we've been doing, we can't continue to keep going. And, you know, we're hoping for better results, but they haven't come to fruition. So, you know, we need to do something different to try and brighten the ship of transportation in one of this three thousand-plus days of missed school, misinstruction. It's just months to go, three thousand is just, you know, unacceptable. And I don't want to go to next year and have numbers like that. You know, compares that camp that they're just a school as a result of us not being able to do this, drink with them for the reason that he needs us for this.
I just wanted to thank Jennifer and Julie for eulogy for Donna. I don't like these, obviously, but I, I do like the fact that she comes out to, you know, people that have dedicated their lives to the kids in that community. I agree a lot with what Matt said, as far as like the missed days, this kind of draw drop, you know, three thousand as an impact. I, I do want to thank Yolanda and her team for all you guys do and drivers. We can try to comprehend what you go through every day, I mean, you're turning the wheel and pushing the gas pedal, you know, and dealing with the, dealing with the kids. It is a little bit refreshing that it is a global issue, but I mean, it is not just isolated, it's a little less, it doesn't make it any easier, it's a, it's still a, still a bad taste in sandwich you have to bite into, but I, I can't, I can't imagine every morning, like, where do you muster up, like, your motivation to show up and, like, you know, if you're all you're doing is trying to put them in fire out every day? So whatever that is, if you guys grab a hold of them. Thank you for grabbing a hold of it. Susan, thanks for your guidance in H R to try to build these positions. And then thanks to everybody for, somebody's got a backfield need, so everybody can step it up and do something different. And, you know, that's, that's what I've always seen in Northwest. It may hit the fan, but we always pull together as a team that's a fan. I've seen that in my five or six years, you know, for, so, but I don't want to take that for granted.
I just want to reiterate what everyone else has already said. Donna, I feel like I got to know her a little bit, listening to Jennifer and Julie, just appreciate her family and them taking time. I want to thank Daryl for leaving district, you know, please, I think that was very helpful. Our bus drivers, I can't say it enough, there's the first and last person that our kids see, and just the amount of things that they, that they take on every day, getting the kids to and from school, just very much appreciated. And also thank our community members that came to speak, and congratulate all of our students that are excelling, and also recognize that this is Public Schools League, so there is some different activities going on throughout the league. Most of the schools, V T As and changes have it on there, so I encourage people to check that out. And remind people to go out and look at the districting website and get to know what, what the changes might be for them and speak up if they have questions, so thank you.
That, the board moving to executive session to discuss devaluation of the treasure and consider the employment and our discipline of a public employee. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the motion to move into executive session as listed.
Second.